My brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior and Savior, we praise God. Thank God for another day, another week, another month, that He have blessed us, that He have kept us, that He smile on us, and certainly, God, our good, all the time, God, mighty good God. Surely, we greet each one of you in the marvelous, majestic, mighty, marvelous name of Him who does things well. To all of our New Hopeians and to all of our friends and families that shares with us during this hour each week. And certainly, we are grateful to each and every one of you. Certainly, I want you to take a moment out to call, or text, or send a message, share this ministry with fellow New Hopeian, or another family friend about this broadcast, this ministry that is taking place here at the New Hope Church. Just take a moment and just let them know that this ministry is on. Certainly, our prayers goes out to all of our members, those who are sick and shedding, those who are in convalescing facilities, who's at home, those who in behind jail and prison walls, prayers goes out to you. Sending our thoughts and sending to those who are on the battlefield, sending they foreign land. We praying for you and sending them, we just praying for mankind everywhere. Finding ourselves this season dealing with storms, Mother Nature, sending those in the Florida and up on the East Coast that is dealing with storms and then down in Hawaii, fires and all, just dealing with Mother Nature, devastation, and certainly, we just praying for those who having to just deal with the issues of life. And certainly, we want you to know that God is still in charge, He still sits high and He still looks low. Shall we pray gracious and all wise God, our Father, we come today just as we are as empty pitches before a full fountain, thanking you, oh God, for another day, another week, another month, that you have blessed us, you smile on us. And certainly, Father, we are indebted to you, we owe you all. And Father, we come now stretching our hands to thee because there's no other, no one else that we can turn to, no one else that can do us any world good but you. Oh Father, have mercy upon us right now, continue to look on us, continue to look on us with our pity, our compassion. Lord, our sins are ever before you, but God, we're thankful that you're faithful and you just to forgive us, that we confess our sins, and God, we confessing our sins of omission and our sins of commission. God, we praying, we pleading, just as you said in your word, that if we confess, that you're faithful, that you will remember them no more, you will remove them as far as the east is from the west. And God, we taking your word, we taking you at your word. Oh God, have mercy on us right now, bless us now, oh God, and the blessing that we all stands in need of. God, we praying for mankind everywhere, look on us, oh God, continue to have thine own way, you are the potter. Thank you that we are the clay, continue to mold us, continue to shape us into who and what you will have us to be. God, continue to stir up the gift that you have placed within us in order to expand, in order to upbuild your kingdom here on earth. Bless us now, oh God, those who are sick, those who have who going through affliction. God, we praying that I would just stretch forth your healing hands and be that holy will. Bless us now, God, those who are physically less sick, going through a mentalist sickness, and then, God, those who going through spiritual sickness. Thank you, oh God, over two thousand years ago, you sent your son Jesus into the world to die for our sins. He was bruised for our iniquity, the chastisement of our pieces was upon him. And thank you, oh Father, that through him, through his stripes, we are healed. Continue to heal us, our sensitive mind, our sensitive body, oh God, do it right now. God, I'm praying for the household of faith, continue to, God, to give us the boldness to stand in these evil days that we find ourselves having to deal and having to live in. Bless us now, God, keep our minds stayed on thee, keep us, oh God, in our right mind. God, we can't move without you, we can't make it without you, we need you, we need you in every step of life, God. We pray that though you will not leave us, nor will you forsake us. Bless us now, come now, oh Father, in the person of the Holy Spirit touch our spiritually ears, that we can hear our eyes, that we can see our hearts, that we can accept what you have to say to the church. Bless us now, we pray that you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be acceptable in our sight, oh Lord, my rock, and my bedema, and all the children of God said, amen. All right, let's get right into our study and discussion all today as we still dealing with a continuation of being spiritually gifted and dealing with the gift that the Lord has given us through the work of the Holy Spirit. And we know that Luke writes and tells us in Acts, chapter number two, verse thirty-eight, that we who are born again, we who have received the gift, which is the Holy Spirit, that the Holy Spirit is the one that brings all the other gifts to us. And Peter said in Acts two and thirty-eight, that when we repent and we are baptized, we receive what? The gift of the Holy Spirit. And that means that the Holy Spirit comes in and take up residence in each believer, and he fills us. I say, he fills us, and so, the Holy Spirit bestows upon us gifts. Every believer has at least one gift, and so, the Holy Spirit, he bestows gifts to us. Yeah, yeah, that's what he does, and we have different gifts according to what? To the grace given to us. And Paul told the believers in Rome, in Romans, chapter twelve, read it when you get a chance, is that if a man's gift is prophesized, let him do it, let him use it in preparation to his faith. Okay, if it's serving, let him serve, if it's teaching, let him teach, if it's encouragement, let him encourage. If it's contributing to the needs of others, let him give generosity, generosity. If it's leadership, let him govern diligently, if it's showing mercy, let him do it cheerfully. And so, when you read the Romans, chapter twelve, verse one through eight, is that we see that Paul is talking about these gifts. And so, today, I want us to look at what he's, what he's, what he's talking about, when he talks about using these gifts, these spiritual gifts that he has given to the believers. Okay, so, so, let's, 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 let's look at it. I gave you one passage, that's in Romans, chapter twelve, verses one through eight, Ephesians, chapter four. Ephesians, chapter four. Look at verses ten and through twelve, that's Ephesians, chapter four, verses ten through twelve. That's dealing with spiritually gifts, dealing with spiritually gift. Also, verses fourteen through sixteen, is that we see these gifts that are being mentioned. Okay, I'm just, I already, I know I've already given to you, but I just want to reemphasize is these gifts that Paul is talking about here in, in, in the passages, okay? So, you got First Corinthians twelve, eight through ten, and First Corinthians twelve, twenty-eight to thirty, okay? And you got Romans, chapter twelve, verse six through eight, and Ephesians, chapter four, and verse eleven, is some of our background scriptures that dealing with some of these descriptions of gifts, okay? Also, I want us to look at First Peter, chapter four, verse ten through eleven, that's First Peter, chapter four, ten through eleven, and then, First Timothy, chapter four, verses twelve through sixteen. And I'm gonna give you some more, that'll be enough to get us started as we dealing with. Let's, let's kind of see, can we discover some of the gifts? And prayerfully, is that you can be able to be guided as far as what the gift that the Lord has blessed you with, okay? Now, the first one is dealing with the gift of administration, the gift of administration. Now, that particular gift is found in First Corinthians, chapter twelve, verse twenty-eight. That's First Corinthians, chapter twelve, verse twenty-eight, and also Titus, chapter one, verses fourth and five, okay? That's Titus, chapter one, verse four and five. Now, this gift of administration is a very unique word that refers to a shipmaster or a captain. It literally means to stir, it means to rule or to govern. And in this Western civilization, many is afraid of that word, administration, and especially when they dealing with a rule and governing, when it comes down to the church. And kind of, kind of, many are afraid of that, but they can take government from the government, from the legal or the secular standpoint, when it come down to the church, is that they have a problem with that. So, when you look at that word, administration, is you got two words down that is knitted together. You got that ad word, ad, A-D, it means to go before, to lead. And then, you have that word, ministration, where we get the word, ministry, minister. And so, when you add, when you know what a ministry is, is just another word of called to serve, called to serve. And, and so, there has to be someone that is leading ministry, that is leading others to serve. And so, when you look at administration, is not only is it dealing with organization of having a governing sense, so to speak, maybe you want to look at as far as the church is an organization, which it is, but there has to be someone who is leading others, who is before others, who making sure that, that things are being governed, that the ship is being stirred correctly. And so, it carries the idea of someone who guides, all right, are you listening to me? Someone who guides and directs a group of people toward our goal or our destination. And so, we see that word in various verses, like in Acts, chapter twenty-seven, and verse eleven, and Revelation, chapter eighteen, verse seventeen. And so, and so, when we look at this gift that the Holy Spirit enables certain Christians in the church, and it's not just the pastor, but there are those individuals who have this gift of administration, is that, is that, is that they are gifted when it come to organizing, when it comes to directing, when it comes to implementing plans to lead others in various ministries of the church. Let me, let me say that again, is that the Holy Spirit has gifted believers, certain believers, certain Christians in the church, whether it's the pastor, whether it's some laypersons in the church, is that they are gifted in organizing, want to write that down, in organizing, in directing and implementing plans to lead others in the various ministries of the church. And that's where I like to use that word, leaders, is that, is that, and not everybody has that gift of administration. Not everyone has that gift of being an administrator. And so, this gift is closely related to the gift of leadership, okay? But it's, but it's more to it when it come down to a minister, administrator, is that that task is concerning with details and organization, dealing with detail. There's a difference, and we're gonna deal with that leadership, having that gift of leader, being a gift of leader, or leadership versus a minister, or being, have the gift of administration. Is that, is that a minister and administration has to do with organization, has to do with leading others as far as details and organization, okay? Okay, so, that's one gift that the Bible speaks about, that he, that the Holy Spirit enables certain individuals to organize, to direct, and implement plans to lead others into various ministries of the church. Okay, so, that's one of the gifts, and you have to, you have to pray that, that the Lord will open your eyes in order to see whether you have this gift or not. And so, so, the next one I want to deal with is the gift of apostleship, the gift of apostleship. I think, I think this is one that is kind of confused and caused a lot of confusion somewhat in this day and time, when it dealing with the office of apostle. And the office of apostle was held by a limited number of men chosen by Jesus, including the twelve disciples. And this, I know, I know this day and time that we have many men and women who use that title as far as apostles, but I'm not gonna argue with that, the scripture speaks for itself. But Mark, chapter three, verses thirteen through nineteen, kind of helps us to understand when it dealing with who are the authentic apostles, that's Mark, chapter three, verses thirteen through nineteen. Paul talks about it in Romans, chapter one, verse one, okay? Romans, chapter one, verse one. Acts, chapter one, verse twenty-one through twenty-two, helps us out in order to identify who have this gift of apostles, okay? That's Acts, chapter one, verse twenty-one through twenty-two. First Corinthians, chapter nine, verse one. First Corinthians, chapter nine, verse one, I'm gonna go back over this real quickly. I'm just giving you these scriptures out, okay? John, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-six, that's John, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-six. Second Peter, chapter three, verses fifteen and sixteen, that's Second Peter, chapter three, verse fifteen and sixteen. Second Corinthians, chapter twelve, verse twelve. Second Corinthians, chapter twelve, verse twelve. Ephesians, chapter four, verse seven through twelve. That's Ephesians, chapter four, verses seven through twelve. Now, I said earlier, is that the office of apostles was held by a limited number of men chosen by Jesus, and that's including the twelve, that's in Mark thirteen, I mean, Mark three and thirteen, and Paul says, in Romans, chapter one. And so, when we look at it in Acts, chapter one, is that it tells us the requirement for the office of apostle, including being a faithful witness of Jesus' ministry in his resurrection. Okay, that was one of the requirements. Paul says, he said, now, what, that what required, that what merit that I met as far as him being a witness of Jesus Christ, is that Paul says in Galatians, chapter one, verse one, that Jesus called Paul himself, he the one called Paul. That Paul was set to be an apostle from his birth, okay? The apostle was given authority by Jesus to do many things, to establish a church, including writing of the scriptures and performing miracles. And that's where you need to read John fourteen and twenty-six, and Second Peter, third chapter, and Second Corinthians, chapter twelve. And there are no more that holds the office of apostle today, but the gift of apostleship continues in a different sense. Jesus gave apostles, when you read Ephesians four, fourth, chapter seven through twelve, is that Jesus gave, through the work of the Holy Spirit, some apostles, prophets, evangelists, pastors, or shepherds, and teachers at his ascension. And these represents a distinct category of apostles. They did not have the authority to write scriptures as the original apostles did. They also have a different purpose in a sense of establishing the church. When we dealing with establishing a church, the foundation, dealing with the doctrine of the church that had already been set by the original apostles. And so, when we look at this gift of apostleship, especially today, is to plant new ministries in churches, to go places where the gospel is not preached, and to reach across cultures, to establish churches and challenge an environment, to raise up and develop leaders. When you kind of look at the work of, if you want to say someone has that gift of apostleship, is to, is to, is to, to preach the gospel where it has not been preached yet. And they are, they are church planters, they are more in a sense of missionaries. They going to other areas or other countries that have not heard of the gospel. And we know that Jesus, in his dialogue with his disciples on Mount Olive, in that twenty-fifth chapter of Matthew, Jesus talks about, when you read it, he said, "The end will not come until the gospel, the gospel has been preached in all the world, and should be a witness unto all nations." And so, so, one of the, one of the, the duties of, or the responsibility of an apostle is to go and plant churches and be missionaries, and to lead multiple ministries or churches in that areas of hearing the gospel for the first time. And so, and so, Ephesians, chapter four, verses eleven, tells us about this gift of apostleship. First Corinthians, chapter nine, verse one, and First Corinthians twelve and twenty-eight. So, 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 that particular gift is not for everyone, and then, a lot of them who are perhaps using that gift, or that title as far as apostle, is not really doing it in line of what the scriptures says the requirements of it is. And so, so, that is one of the gifts that the scripture speaks of when it dealing with the Holy Spirit enabling believers with different gifts. Let me move on, the third gift is the gift of discernment, discernment, the gift of discernment. And that's also in First Corinthians, chapter twelve, verse ten. Acts, chapter five, verse three and through six, Acts, chapter sixteen, verse sixteen through eighteen, and First Corinthians, I mean, First John, chapter four, verse one, okay? Those are some good background scriptures in order to, to understand this gift of this discernment. This is known as also the gift of distinguishing between spirits, the distinguishing between spirit. This, this, this gift has to do with judging or praises of a person, statement, a person's situation, or a person's environment. In the New Testament, this gift is described as the ability to distinguish between spirits, as in First Corinthians, chapter twelve, verse ten. And then, in Hebrews, chapter five, verse fourteen, is that a person has the gift of discerning or distinguishing between good and evil. And we understand that the Holy Spirit gives the gift of discernment to enable certain Christian to clearly recognize and distinguish between the influence of God, Satan, the world, and the flesh in a given situation. I think that needs to be understood clearly, when it, when it comes down to this gift of discernment, is that the Holy Spirit enables certain Christians to clearly recognize and distinguish between, notice the word, the influence, of who, first of all, pastor? God, Satan, the world, the flesh, in any given situation. And I need, I need to reemphasize is this, is that the church need those gift, the church needs those with the gift to warn believers in times of danger or keep them from being led astray by false teaching. Lord, have mercy. Is that if there ever was a time that the church needs believers to operate in this gift, is now. Is that, that, that needs to be someone who the Holy Spirit has enabled to warn the believers in times of danger, to keep from being led astray by false teaching. And that's where First Corinthians twelve and ten, and First John, four and one, and Acts, five, three and six, and chapter sixteen of Acts emphasizes the importance of believers, certain believers having this gift. All right, now, we're still there. So, so, we talking about discovering our gifts, and we got to pray that the Holy Spirit will direct us, that he will move, he will stir up in us, whether or not is that he have called us, he been able us to have this gift. Now, the fourth gift I want to deal with is the gift of evangelism, the gift of evangelism. And many today has, not saying everybody, but many, especially in our, in our church today, has a different approach, a different understanding of what it means to evangelize. All of us as Christians are called to evangelize and to reach out to the lost with the gospel. Each one of us, each believer. Each one of us, each believer ought to have this gift of evangelizing. But some of them giving an extra measure of faith in in effectiveness in this area. And the spirit, oh, the spiritual gift of evangelism is found in Ephesians chapter four verse eleven and twelve, where Paul said that Jesus gave some apostles and then the prophets, and then he used the word evangelist, to do what? To equip the saints for the work of the ministry. Now, when we look at that word evangelist, it means one who brings good news. And that word evangelist uh is only found in two places in the New Testament scriptures. And that's in Acts chapter twenty-one verse eight and Second Timothy chapter four verse five. That word evangelist is only found in two places in the New Testament. That's Acts chapter twenty-one verse eight and Second Timothy verse four and five. And evangelists are given the unique ability by the Holy Spirit to clearly and effectively communicate the gospel of Jesus Christ to others. They have a burden in their hearts for the lost and will go out their way to share the truth with them. Evangelist is to go out outside of the four walls. What we have in the church today uh is more like revival. Evangelists are able to overcome the normal fear or rejection and engage non-believers in meaningful conversation about Jesus. Having this gift allows them to co- to communicate with all types of people, and therefore they receive a greater response to the message of salvation through Jesus the Christ. Their their main objective is to share the good news to the lost. That good news is Jesus Christ. Second Corinthians chapter four verse seven says that evangelists love giving free treasures away for Jesus. And it brings them great joy knowing that the feet that brings good news are beautiful to those who believe. Lesson Isaiah chapter fifty-two verses number seven. So when you get a chance, read Ephesians chapter four and eleven again, but also want you to add on Acts chapter eight verses five through twelve. Skip down to verse twenty-six and forty of that eight chapter of um Acts. And then Acts chapter twenty-one verse eight. And we all are familiar with Matthew chapter twenty-eight verses eighteen through twenty. And that's the gift of evangelism. Is to go to seek those which are lost. Had a heart for lostness. Is to share the good news of Jesus Christ. Then I wanna, I wanna look at one final one is the gift of exhortation, exhortation, exhortation. That's the gift of encouragement, another word for en- encouragement. It means to uh pursue, pursue, exalt, call upon, to encourage and to strengthen. The main objective of of a person that had this gift of exhortation is 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 to remind the hearers of the powerful and amazing work of God and Christ Jesus. Is 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 to encourage others believers about what Jesus worked on the cross meant, or what it really means. Paul commanded Titus to use the gift in Titus chapter one verse nine. And throughout chapter two. But particular in Titus chapter two verses eleven through fifteen. Paul uh encouraged two of his son in the ministry, Titus and Timothy. Uh told Timothy uh uh and Timothy chapter two verses four and two, he charged Timothy to use this gift of exhortation to encourage the other believers. And God uh through the work of the Holy Spirit, uh give this gift to peoples in the church to strengthen and encourage those who are uh somewhat weak, uh somewhat who are wavery in the faith. So those individuals who have this gift of of exhortation uh ought to exalt, ought to e- uplift, ought to motivate others as well as challenge and rebuke others in order uh to uh uh cause them to grow spiritually in their faith. And when you look at the ultimate goal of the encourager, of the one that has this gift of his ex- exhortation, is to see that everyone in the church continually building up the body of Christ and glorifying God. Not every person in the church has this gift of encouragement. Not every, not every person, that just because a person don't have this gift uh does not mean that they are not a believer. But every person uh 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 that is believer uh that does not have this gift ought not to uh 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 be in a position of um of uh being a hindrance to those who have this gift. And what my assignment is, is to bring awareness to those who the Holy Spirit has gifted with this gift of his exo- exhortation, this gift of being an encourager. And I think when you look at scripture, one of the, one of, one of the main characters uh in scriptures that I comes in my mind that had this gift of encouraging was Bonamus. Bonamus was a an encourager. You don't see too much spotlight on Bonamus, but Bonamus was very helpful to the ministry of Paul in the early organization of the church. And when you look at that word Bonamus, uh it comes from that word to encourage. He was a con- a consoler. And I really do believe that every believer needs to have uh a Bonamus in their life. The church, the church will uh uh will 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 become a miserable place, will become a place of desert. If there's no Bonamus, if there's no encouragers. If there's no one there to uplift those whose faith become wavery and become weak. So can I challenge us to, let's, let's take an observations of these gifts that we've, 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 we've discussed on today, uh the gift of administration. Uh pray and and ask the Lord to reveal to you whether you have this gift of uh leading, uh to uh to organize, uh to um to 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 have a s- to have a spirit of organization, uh to lead the various ministries uh of the church into the work of the church. And 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 that's what that word administration means, is to lead, to go before, to lead ministries, to lead others in ministry. Uh then secondly, we dealt with the gift of apostleship, is that uh um I know this day and time, when you look at the scriptures and looking at what goes on as far as who's using that that title, apostles, is that um, but then according to scripture, we do believe that there are those who have this um the gift of of um of going to various parts of 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 the country of the world, uh establishing or organizing churches and um and 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 planting churches, um they have that gift. Uh that it was kind of different from the original uh uh twelve apostles and including Paul. And then third, that we dealt with the gift of dis- discernment, is that uh there has to be, there ought to be someone that uh has this gift, this this been enabled to um to distinguish between um uh what God is saying, what Satan, what the, what the, what what the world, uh in order to be able to distinguish between spirits, whether this is of God, whether this is of man, whether this of the devil, and 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 uh and and we have to, we have to, as believers, we have to believe in spiritualism. Uh that there are many spirits uh that exist in the world. The Bible speaks about sp- uh spiritualism. And so we have to be careful when it comes down to um uh 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 being led or being guided by different spirits. And uh we we have to, we have to be mindful of um of these different uh types of spirit that exists, not in the world, but also in the church. And there has to be someone who has this gift of discernment to warn believers of uh times of danger and to keep them from being led astray by false teaching. And then we dealt with the gift of evangelism, is that that is of every unique gift, every, every person, every believer does not have that gift of evangelism. Evangelism has to do with going out to the lost, not to the saved, but going out to the lost world. A person that evangelized has a heart for lostness. Has a lo- has a heart for lostness. Getting out of these four walls of the church or the building and going out to the, to the lost world and uh and preaching and sharing the good news of Jesus Christ. Okay? And then we dealt with the the gift of exa- exhortation, is that um uh uh you ought to pray and ask whether or not that the Spirit has enabled you with the, with the, with the, the gift of of encouraging. Is uh the uplift other believers uh who faith is wavery or faith is weak. And uh everybody can't go to others. Uh sometime it's not uh what you say, but sometime it's how you say it, and sometime it has to do with uh the timing. So a person that had this gift of exhortation uh 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 has that um that 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 special gift of strengthening and encouraging uh those who are already part of the body uh to continue to glorify God. Okay? So we're gonna stop right there and as we just, as we continue talking about discovering our spiritual gifts and um and praying that after we go over these uh gifts, that if you're not uh operating in them, that you will stir up. Uh if you don't know what your gift or gifts are, is that after these um uh weeks of study, is that uh preferably it would be my, 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 my main goal is to uh awaken and cause you to come to the realization that uh you've been gifted in this area. All right, God bless you, God keep you, is our prayer. Let us pray, God, we thank you now for saving us right in the nick of time. Thank you then, God, for giving us what we needed, and and that's the Holy Spirit, not only who shall keep us, not only who shall guide us, but he gifts us in order to do the uh the kingdom work here on earth. And God, we praying now that you would uh continue to give us a hunger, continue to give us a thirst for righteousness, that we may be able to uh build up your kingdom here on earth. And God, we praying that we can, and asking that we know that we cannot do it by ourselves, but you have enabled us, you have fueled us with your Holy Spirit. Bless us now, keep us, God, in your keeping power, and we gonna be forever to give you all the praise and the glory. Thank you, oh God, again, that you saw something in each one of us that we did not see in ourselves. You saved us, you preserved us, and then, God, you commissioned us to do your will. Bless us now, in Jesus' name we ask it all, amen.